Good evening, everybody. Welcome. It's not the October 7th. What is today's date?
Twenty first.
October twenty first. Newburgh City Council meeting. I call this meeting to order. Could we have a roll call, please?
Certainly. councillor McBride?
Here.
Councillor Wheatley?
Here.
Councillor Yarnell-Holloman?
Here.
Mayor Rosacker?
Here.
Councillor Cloyde?
Here.
And councillor Carmen. And councillor Kilburg is absent tonight.
Can you hear me now?
Okay.
Is this a groucho mark still here or what? Okay. Uh, so, planning. Planning combined decisions of all sorts. There were seven. Okay, now I know. Is this April Fools or is it October? New slide, please. Uh, there were no permits pulled for building or units or housing units. And that's a very low number. Building permits for other types, fifty-one. And, thank you. And as you can see, that's a very low number as well. And, and actually, very recently, Mr. Talt was extremely helpful and went back through all of our statistics for the last three years to re-verify some of my assumptions about water production. And it was really, really good. And I'd like to thank you, Jim, if you're watching tonight, because it correlated with what I thought as well. So it's always good to have second eyes on something like that. So the building inspection, six sixty-seven. A fair number, but also down a little bit. Uh, something that's not been down lately, submission forms through the website, twenty-five. That's kind of on par with our recent trends. And social media is exploding, thirteen thousand seven hundred and sixty, which is one of the bigger numbers we've ever seen. Social followers continues to just tick up steadily, as it always has done. So no surprises there. Uh, a big uptick in public records requests, up to eight. And of course, each one of these takes many hours of time to process and work through, sometimes with more than one department involved. And then one point five two million of payments to accounts payable and one point one two millions of payroll. And you can see the trend here with the colas kicked in for this year. We're not seeing months anymore when we're under a million dollars for payroll. You're not going to see that again. That's the effect of cost of living increases. And then, HR activity, the good times couldn't last. We had a couple of retirements. We had some people promoted into blank spots. And we're once again looking for some folk, but we had a lovely run of several months of fully staffedness. So, recruitment's advertised, five hires, three separations, two and five claims of various sorts. And as I always say to people, a claim is not necessarily a bad thing. It could be something to help somebody with their family, like FMLA or something. IT resolved two hundred and sixty-seven separate problems for the city. And that was a bigger number than normal. We had four after-hours on-call events. And part of that was because, as you may recall, we were having trouble with one of our main switches. It kept going down and taking the whole network down. So a lot of these after-hours calls were to rush back in and try and reset the switch in the network. And that switch has now been removed from the network. Taking the switch out, believe it or not, surprised me, was an extremely complicated process, figuring out all the pathways that went through that specific switch in our server array. Library activity is on fire. Thirty-five thousand five hundred and sixty-two on the door count and nine-three-five-five on circulation events. And these are, continue to be record-breaking numbers. Public safety, quite a big number as well there, two thousand six hundred and forty-five calls for service, up from our averages, as you can see. Nine hundred traffic stops, also a lot higher than we've seen recently. We have had a lot of speeding recently as well. And six hundred and forty-six citations and warnings, a bit higher than usual also. And also. And that's a bad number. That's thirteen DUIIs. And in today's day and age, I don't know why people can't get a friend to take them or get a rideshare or do what I do if I'm going out for a few pints. I walk to the pub. That's the smart thing to do. We had eight oh eight nine one one calls and two thousand nine hundred and forty-seven non-emergency calls. And that's a fairly hefty number also. Water production, one hundred and fifteen million gallons and sixty-one point five seven million gallons treated. And water production that we, we know continues to increase slightly every year as our population grows. Nothing dramatic or alarming. We're talking about a region of one percent-ish, but it's steadily going up every year, as you would expect. There was thirteen fifty-three work orders. And you remember I stated that I thought work orders would increase once we finished that big project at the yard. The guys got back out and they're doing more repairs on street projects. Fifty-seven point eight five megawatt hours of energy generated. Seems to be typical for that time of year or August. And here are some things I'm noticing right now. That's the totals to the end of August. However, as you have watched and seen, housing production continues to be very slow this year. And that's also spilling over into other inspections and permits. The library is being used more than it has ever been before. There has been a slight but noticeable uptick in speeding, but not DUIIs, except for that spike that one month. Social media engagement is twice what it was before we added Instagram. So lots of people are connecting with us that way. And there was a slight uptick in average water production, but that is in line with my estimates, as now double-checked by Mr. Talt. Thank you, mate. And public work orders are down somewhat this year. And I attribute that to the large all-hands-on-deck construction projects tackled at the yard and Hess Creek. The Hess Creek project has been completed. It's under budget and no sewage has entered Hess Creek. And there was a risk of that pipe being washed out. So we jumped on that. We fixed it. So thank you to Preston and the guys. Any questions about this snapshot?
Um, Mr. Worrier, it appeared to me that the most striking number in there were from the library. I, uh, Corey, good job.
So in regards to the library, Corey, um, what do you, what do you think is driving this? Because we're kind of coming at the end of summer where you would think people were busy doing stuff and... But it seems like it's been kind of high, I mean, not high, it's been used a lot all, all year. So what do you think is attributing to it?
Well, our numbers are definitely down from the summer. So summer still continues to be our highest time of the year. Uh, we do notice a little bit of a quiet time at the beginning of September. And then, uh, then things start to pick up when kids are back in school for enough weeks that parents feel like they can add something to the routine. And then we especially see upticks again when there's parent-teacher conferences. Uh, because then the teachers and the parents are talking about, uh, the need for reading, uh, reading levels. Um, and so I think that's one of the things. Uh, the other is we continue to be a library that has a lot of really strong programming. So we have a lot of really interesting things going on at the library. And I definitely see many more people in the library on days when we have programming too. So I think it's really a combination of a lot of things.
And I feel bound to add a little part to that as one library professional to another. One of the main drivers of good circulation numbers is hundreds and thousands of hours of careful selecting work, getting people the books that they actually want to read. And that's an underlying thing that's always happening. So if you see good circulation, it means your selectors are picking out good stuff for people to read.
Thank you very much. And again, good work. Let your crew know that we really appreciate what they're doing. Um, now it's time for public comments. Becky Wallace? Rebecca Wallace, I'm sorry.
Good evening. I am Rebecca Wallace. And, uh, this isn't something that I wanted to come and do, but, um, I feel like I need to because, um, we have to fight for our constitutional rights sometimes. So good evening, council members. My name is Rebecca Wallace, managing editor of Yamhill County News. I'm here to address my exclusion from the city's executive session on July eighteenth, twenty twenty-four and the inconsistent and biased process surrounding my recognition as a media representative. First, I want to emphasize that in Newburgh's city, uh, council manager form of government, the mayor does not have the sole authority to determine who may attend executive sessions. Such decisions must be made by the entire council. On July eighteenth, I specifically requested that the mayor bring the decision regarding my admittance before the entire council, and he refused to do so. This is a clear overreach of his authority and undermines the council's role in making collective decisions for the city. Under ORS one nine two point six six zero, the council has the power to admit anyone they choose to an executive session. Representatives of the news media are allowed to attend except under very specific exemptions. It is the council's responsibility as the governing body to make these decisions, not the mayor or the city manager acting alone. The lack of council involvement in this decision raises serious concerns about transparency and accountability. I understand that the mayor may point to the ongoing opinion being drafted by the Oregon Government Ethics Commission regarding the process they developed. However, I want to be clear that regardless of any process or advisory opinion, the council, as an elected governing body, retains the final authority over who is admitted to executive sessions. This is your decision. And no process should remove or diminish the council's role in ensuring fair and open governance. I would also like to address the fact that both the mayor and the city manager referred to my newspaper, the Yamhill County News, as a blog. This is a personal opinion, not a factual representation of my work as a recognized media outlet. The city has no established process for determining media eligibility for executive sessions before my request. And this lack of a formal process has allowed personal judgments and opinions to dictate the outcome. Instead of a clear, consistent path for media recognition, I have faced shifting criteria and arbitrary decisions based on the personal views of the mayor and the city manager. I strongly encourage the council to develop a clear, formal process for determining who is admitted to executive sessions, especially for members of the media. While the Ethics Commission may provide advice on this process, it is ultimately up to the council to make the final decision on admittance. This will ensure that decisions are made fairly and in line with Oregon Public Meetings law and will prevent the kind of arbitrary decision-making that has occurred in my case. And as a side note, I advise the city manager and the mayor that my status as a media representative went under full legal review with CPRD's legal, with the Yamhill County Board of Directors legal, and with the, the Newburgh School District's legal. And they all recognize my paper as a qualified news entity to attend executive sessions. I urge the council to take responsibility for this matter and ensure that it is handled with the transparency and fairness our community deserves. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Um, now, we're moving on to new business, the River Street discussion.
Good evening again, honourable mayor and council. This doesn't have a slideshow or any supporting items. This is actually a relatively simple question, and it's actually to determine the will of council with regard to its desire to look at the reconstruction of River Street, but it would have to be backed by city debt that paid for by Nura tax increment financing. And what I'm seeking here is really kind of a continue-to-proceed or a, or a stop piece of direction. Council may feel that it's advantageous to conduct the complete rebuild of River Street sooner than the five to seven years that it will take for Nura to have accrued sufficient funds to do so on its own. Conversely, the council may feel or desire to wait until Nura has its own funds set aside to do this. If council desires to authorize staff to continue to spend staff time and resources, continuing to work up an estimate and also figure out some of the slightly complicated planning steps that would have to happen in order to facilitate a River Street rebuild, it would be good for us to know, simply so as to not put any more staff time into this one if we're not going down this road. The executive summary. The Nura Community Advisory Board recommended that the original Nura plan, Order of Operations, should be followed. If accepted, this would mean that the River Street project would be the first thing that Nura undertakes. At this time, Nura does not have sufficient revenue to secure this sort of loan, as KD investigated for us. The city could secure a loan with an IGA such that the payments would be made by tax increment financing by Nura. And we can imagine a construction where some city SDC funds would be added to the mixture to facilitate the project affordably. And I checked recently, there is seven million dollars available in transportation SDCs. So we could use some of that funding from the city side to match some of the Nura funding. As you know, residents do complain about River Street frequently. But the city does not have any regular transportation funds left at this time to address this without the use of a debt mechanism. I am estimating at this time, without having, without the engineering people having done a design yet, that we might be talking about something in the region of ten million dollars. But please allow me to emphasize, the true numbers cannot be known until the design is created to rebuild the street. You have to get up into a thirty or sixty percent design position before you can know the dollar amount. So that might be a good ballpark based upon our experiences recently. They might be less than that. And I will be watching this project like a hawk to make sure that it's as affordable as it possibly can be. Now, if the project is delayed until Nura can finance River Street, there will be, of course, several hundred thousands of dollars that will need to be spent in the near term on spot repairs, just to keep the road somewhat navigable. A decision either way will inform a long-range financial plan that I feel and have advocated that we should start to work on soon. So, that is in a broad brushstrokes. Should, should further staff time be dedicated to this? Or is there a philosophical feeling that there must be a delay until Nura has collected sufficient revenue to do this itself?
So I have two questions. One is, did I hear you say that Nura has enough money that they could, we could get the loan, but they could reimburse us for the payments? Was that correct? Did I hear that right?
The mechanism that is envisaged, and of course, no debt package has been written yet, because that would take a lot of staff time, would be one where payments would be made by Nura and not by the city, with some savings built into the package by using some system development charge revenue.
Okay, so my follow-up is, are we at the point with River Street that if we decided, let's go in and let's just fix it, we get the loan, whatever, that it's done? Are we at the point where it would be done or are we, are we still going to be going back through, tearing the road up because we've got some other things to do yet? I mean, that happened on, on Springbrook, like, four different times years ago. And that costs money and it's ridiculous, in my opinion.
I'm glad you asked that question, councillor McBride. The majority of the subsurface infrastructure on River Street is actually in pretty good condition. Now, there are two pathways over River Street that will have to carry HB two thousand and one lines. The HB two thousand and one upgrades are part of the current CIP, and you will be seeing those in the CIP for the next several years. So the answer is, most of the infrastructure under that road is okay. But there are two lines that we know of, but they have to be tackled anyway. So there might be some cost savings in getting those sections at the same time.
I, I support moving forward with staff time, continuing to scope out the project and the design not of River Street. Does it, so I first want to support what the Nura Citizen Advisory Committee put forward. Can you explain a little bit, just for my own self and probably for others too? Um, the, the thought behind doing that before bringing sewer and water out to the area that we will be developing?
So, in the conversations with the CAC, they reviewed the current plan. And basically, they felt that as a keystone road with possible implications for the mill site, that that would be a high priority project. They also, though, in following that sequencing, there is also some lift station upsizing that's in that same area. And so that, that would possibly be a part of this, once we look at some costs.
So, my understanding is we were working on trying to get some gentlemen together for a sidewalk repair because it costs so much to have that done contracted out. Are we there yet or?
Sadly, we are still one person shy of having a completed sidewalk team. And if anybody who hears this at home has a young man or girl who wants to get involved in becoming an apprentice sidewalk employee for cement finishing, please reach out to the city through its recruitment channel. We're not quite there yet.
Well, I, I kind of feel like we should probably continue and move forward only because it seems like the south side of town has kind of had some neglect. And, and River Street is such a heavily-used street. I think we really need, need to get it up to speed and, and repair. And I, and I think if, if we can secure the loan and Nura, you know, makes the payments, I, I think we ought to just move, move forward and, and get it done and do just a really good job because it's, it's going to be heavily used and it, it's... I just think, yeah, that's what we ought to do, go in that direction.
I fully support this, um, and it meets our council goals. Uh, question about Nura, does this trigger now, like, an IGA with, um, does Nura need its own separate legal counsel? Aside from Miller-Nash?
I think the direct question of are we at the point now where Nura needs separate legal counsel? I'm going to defer to my honourable colleague on that question. I will say that just as, if this motion is accepted by council, there will still, will have to be a reciprocal motion at a Nura session. And then there will have to be the negotiation later of an IGA. And also, we have to understand the dollar amount to do the IGA. So the sequencing will be, council approves, Nura meeting, Nura approves in principle. We go do a bunch of work. We come back with a more refined dollar amount. That's the basis of an IGA. And then I will defer to my honourable colleague about whether Miller-Nash could serve in both capacities.
Yeah, given, given Nura's position as a distinct, um, entity, we'd recommend that there be, that other council that could represent Nura. So it'll be a bit of a interesting meeting because you have the public body, which makes up primarily the same people, but, but an additional lawyer, uh, involved. Um, but yes, to answer your question, councillor Carmen, it would be good for them to engage separate counsel.
So, I normally would be against this, but since River Street is such a high priority, why not kill two birds with one stone? Uh, we definitely want to pay for it with the, uh, urban renewal dollars. So, uh, I'm, I'm in favor as well. So we don't need a motion. You just need to have direction from the council, correct?
I, actually, in this particular case, with such a momentous thing, I think I would, I, I would enjoy a motion.
I move that we go ahead and move forward with the design and repair of, uh, River Street Road.
I'll second it.
And I will definitely, there'll be a lot more decisions and more things to do. This is not a done deal by any means. And council or Nura can pull out if they don't like the flavor of the numbers.
So I have one more question. If we have to get separate legal counsel, that could be expensive. How, where's the money coming from? Because does Nura have enough funds in there to pay for that, you think? Oh, okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second to... I had it in my head before you asked your next question. Yes, please.
To move forward with design and repair of River Street Road.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. So, okay, the next item, are you not the... Okay. Next item is going to be the, uh, council appointment process update. This is interesting because I'll bet none of us knew that we had this particular packet.
So, last year, after all of our council appointments, I decided it was time to do a deep dive into the processes and what had been approved over the many years, um, before I took this position. And I found many different resolutions and things that advised how we would handle it over the years, and many updated each other. And it finally came down to one that said, here's a proposed process, or the mayor can do whatever he wants. Um, which is an interesting process, but okay. But one thing it did say we had to do is it said you shall interview all candidates, which, um, could be very, very lengthy. So I am proposing that we change that language to "may". So you have the, you have the right to interview any and all candidates, but you are not required to interview all candidates. So that is all it is, actually.
Yeah, um, we have a motion, do we not? Yes, now.
Okay. I'm not going to disrupt this, but I do disagree in principle. I think that it is not doing the community a service to not publicly interview, to give people the chance to understand and hear the questions and hear people's response. The way people write and the way people speak often are very different, as a lot of people in this room know. So I think that, um, I won't support that.
Is there any further discussion? All right, so there is not a motion in here. A recommendation from the staff is that we should move to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-nine fifty to update the community rules to align with the current practice for apartment. Would anybody like to make a motion to approve, uh, Resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-nine fifty? Thank you, Derek.
Yes, I move that we, uh, approve Resolution twenty twenty-four thirty-nine fifty.
Second. All right, we have a motion on the table. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all... Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you. Sorry, Lisa. At this point, I left my notes in my car, so I'm going to, uh, we'll need a break anyway. Let's take five minutes. Actually, let's take ten, so I can do both things I need to do. Uh, we'll be back in, yeah, about ten minutes. Thank you. Shall we go ahead and restart the meeting? I call the meeting ordered? The next item on our agenda is James Dingwell.
Good evening, your honourable mayor and council Scott Segal, Community Development Director. And with me this evening is James Dingwell, Associate Plan, Assistant Planner. And James is going to be presenting tonight. Uh, but I just wanted to say, uh, in follow-up to the study session that you held or the check-in that we provided back in August, we did contact DLCD. We researched the questions that you had asked about scope and the different options that are available to the city. James is going to walk through some of that. But what I wanted to emphasize with, uh, the scoping process that we've been going through for the last several months, we have not tapped into any of the, the budget, any of the resources that were budgeted for this work. So, I just wanted you to be aware of that. We've been very sensitive to that. And I think the options and the different sort of strategy, uh, choices that, that you have around this are really, we're looking at it as a way to, uh, manage the process in a way that gets to the outcomes that, that you've set for your, your council goal around employment and housing lands. And coming in, if we can, under what we've budgeted. So we've looked at what other communities have done in this body of work. And we think that there are some options that are available to this, to the community that would allow us to get through this in a, in a more cost-effective way than other cities have, have done this. And in fact, cities attempted it in the past. So I just wanted to emphasize that. And along with the different, um, process cho- choices that you have here, you do have off-ramps along the way, whether we're looking at employment land or a one-time urban growth boundary amendment for housing. We go out to the community, we find out what, you know, what level of interest there is in, in these options. And if there isn't sufficient interest or you don't like, uh, the proposals that we're, that we're seeing, uh, you have the option of, uh, pulling the plug on that and we wouldn't move forward with it. So, I just wanted to emphasize that these are, um, uh, th- this process that we're, we're going to be talking about for housing is one that we would opt into with your, uh, direction. It's not something that the state is telling us that we must do. With that, I'll hand it over to James.
Alright, so good evening councillor. So as Scott mentioned, we're going to be looking at an update to the land supply and need discussion that we've been having over the past few months. And following our last update and conversations with DLCD. So to start off, staff's recommendations are to approve Resolution number twenty twenty four thirty nine fifty two, requesting that the Department of Land Conservation and Development dissolve the sequential urban growth boundary review program, approve on April ninth, and modify the deadlines for the City of Newburgh to adopt the housing capacity analysis and housing production strategy, respectively to twenty twenty seven and twenty twenty eight, in compliance with state housing requirements. And then second, the council moved to direct staff to initiate work on a solicitation for a one-time EGB expansion proposals under Senate Bill fifteen thirty seven passed in twenty twenty four. And this work continues to promote, um, City Council Goal two, identifying industrial land and attracting employers to encourage family wage jobs. But clearly, objectives one and two, identifying land other than the mill site, the zone for light industrial or light manufacturing, and working to bring land into the urban growth boundary to zone for light manufacturing within five years. And Goal seven, increasing land availability for housing. Objective two, working to bring land into the urban growth boundary to zone for residential purposes within five years. So following the council's direction on August nineteenth, for staff to request, um, from DLCD that the approved sequential work program be modified to include only the twenty twenty one economic opportunities analysis, DLCD indicated that the city may adopt the EOA into the comprehensive plan without concurrently amending the EGB. If the EOA, if the EOA identifies a deficit, which the twenty twenty one does, then the city would have to address that deficit, but there would not be the concurrency requirements as with housing. So the city would be on its own timeline to address that employment land deficit. And that if the city chose to pursue only the economic opportunities analysis, it should dissolve the sequential work program that will be entered and continue through a post-acknowledgement plan amendment. This would shift us from the sequential that split up the larger EGB amendment into analysis, efficiency measures, and the amendment itself, uh, kind of providing for appeal outlets along each step of the way and locking in each, um, set of work. Um, and kind of, um, splitting it to where the EOA is adopted as a PAPA, has an appeal process for the EOA, and then any potential EGB amendment would happen under a periodic review. So kind of providing a similar, um, split of appeal possibilities, um, but not requiring the entire sequential work program that was approved last, or, or, early this year. The approved sequential work program also included, um, the twenty twenty one housing needs analysis and the semi and public semi land analysis. Newburgh is currently scheduled to adopt an HNA in twenty twenty four and a housing production strategy in twenty twenty five on DLCD's statewide housing planning schedule. However, um, DLCD has indicated that the city could request to reschedule that to the next cohort of, of cities that will be undertaking the new, um, housing planning in twenty twenty seven and twenty twenty eight. This would allow the new housing, uh, capacity analysis to utilize the newer population projections that were issued this year. And then also, um, update a buildable land inventory to account for development that has occurred since the twenty twenty one HNA was, uh, produced. However, the twenty twenty seven and twenty eight analysis would be subject to the new state rulemaking, um, that's currently underdeveloped and is yet to be adopted. So there's a little bit of uncertainty there. And while the broader housing analysis of that updated HCA and HPS would occur in the future, the city can still consider utilizing the recently passed, um, one-time expansion, which we'll talk about next. Before we get on that, um, note, are there any questions about the, um, shift from the sequential to the post-acknowledgement plan amendment for the EOA? Possibly the one-time housing expansion and then the, the delayed housing work in the future?
I like where you're going. I think this is a good time. Let's address this issue right now. And then we can move on to the next issue. So, um, any questions for them on, on what we just talked about? If not, would somebody like to make a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty four thirty nine fifty two? Robin?
I move we approve Resolution number twenty twenty four dash thirty nine fifty two, requesting the Department of Land Conservation and Development, um, to dissolve the sequential urban growth boundary review work program.
I'll take it back.
Okay, we have a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty four thirty nine fifty two and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, uh, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you. Alright, Jay.
Great. So, moving on to SB fifteen thirty seven. Um, as a quick overview, the bill provides for a one-time EGB expansion not to exceed one hundred acres. This can be a site made up of one parcel or a group of parcels and does not have to be under common ownership. Proposed expansion areas require concept planning and housing affordability requirements. And cities must demonstrate the need for additional land and the need for affordable housing, which the city currently meets the statutory requirements in the bill. The sites, um, so, um, the site being either a parcel or a group of parcels must be contiguous to the EGB, um, and designated either an urban reserve, non-resourced land, or subject to an acknowledged exception to statewide planning goals related to farmland and forest land. So the, the next slide shows an initial evaluation of potentially eligible lands. If the city chooses to pursue this path, a solicitation of applications, um, would be issued, which would require, um, property owners to submit proposals with concept plans that include the types of housing and their affordability. Any non-residential designation, so open space, commercial, et cetera. Transportation network needs. And the concept plan would require that at least thirty percent of the residential units in the addition be subject to affordability requirements for at least sixty years. So this map shows a preliminary evaluation of parcels that may be eligible for this expansion, um, including urban reserve areas in blue and, um, exceptional land in green. Um, this exceptionally analysis comes from some twenty seventeen analysis that, that the city did as part of a previous simplified urban growth boundary, um, review. So it, it uses the exception designations, um, as kind of a preliminary evaluation of, does the city have any land at all that could be included? Um, and so the requirement would just be that the site has to be contiguous somewhere along the EGB, but could snake or kind of chain parcels together, depending on how owners decide to submit an application. So, again, this is kind of very preliminary, just kind of exploring if we have any possible options. Um, and then when the city could choose to issue that solic- solicitation, um, it would, it would be kind of partially on the owner, on the applicant to verify their eligibility and then on the city to confirm that proposed site's eligibility.
James, I have a question.
Yep.
These are all small parcels. We can do up to a hundred acres. Do they have to be in the same area? Could it be parcels in different areas around the boundary?
So the, the bill, um, designate, uh, a lot or parcel or contiguous lots, lots or parcels. So I, I would, uh, imagine that we need one contiguous and then could have that, you know, grow however necessary, but, but kind of one site that is contiguous somewhere along the, I would guess no.
And I would just add that, you know, part of the methodology would involve, you know, looking at serviceability. A lot of these parcels are remote, uh, some are steep, some maybe beyond our water pressure capabilities. Uh, there are a number of reasons that, you know, many of these parcels could, could fall out of the analysis. So we wouldn't want to solicit proposals from people, uh, who, whose properties wouldn't, you know, even remotely be eligible. So we try to do some of that analysis before we would contact people, right?
Yeah. Um, and then one lesson on the map is, um, there is a third category of non-resourced land, which ties to how, how the county, um, has designated their comprehensive plan on some, um, parcels, which this does not include, just, um, given the, um, kind of scope of the question of, of do we have, have land at all? So that would be a third layer of possibility. But many of, of the larger sites that you see in, that aren't colored there, um, are non-exceptional lands. So are, are already kind of designated as that high-value agriculture, um, land. So, other cities have begun exploring this one-time expansion process. And this slide gives a summary of how that solicitation could proceed. Um, so that could include a call for site applications with an info session and public outreach, um, and also notifying the county and any overlapping service districts, receipt of site applications and a site selection, which would include a planning commission and city council work sessions and hearings, um, per the bill. If the applications are received, um, the council may choose not to move forward if, um, there aren't sites that meet the, um, needs or, or goals of, of the council. And then finally, refinement and adoption of that proposed concept plan with review by DLCD. So with that, uh, staff's recommendation would be to initiate work on this solicitation, um, kind of first step. And we're happy to answer any questions.
There's any, okay, go ahead, Mike.
This area up here, I'm assuming this is outside of, um, ADX property, it must all be right.
That blue is the, for most parts, okay, it's a green property.
Oh, okay. Urban, I thought that was inside the city limits. Well, they're part of it, part of the city.
Yes.
So, how to develop in much of that? That is, that's right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Also, I, I, so, that blue is, is also outside of, of the EGB. So it's, it's the ur- urban reserve, but we'll still have to go through the, um, EGB expansion process before annexation. So kind of it's that double.
So therefore, they would be the one customer that we definitely need to get a hold of and see if they're interested in proceeding with this process.
But that, that big chunk of blue though, isn't that,
isn't that going up, up part of the hill quite a bit?
I mean, I, I think, you know, site development feasibility would kind of be something that the applicant would have to consider once, you know, submitting their proposals and then for council to, um, consider when, when we get to that, concept plan evaluation stage.
If it has to be all, I mean, like the mayor said, we can't do some down here and some over here. So what about these smaller, but, well, there's a pretty good blue chunk down there. Can, can somehow we work with whoever owns that to get it brought in? Because it's real close to our, our boundary.
Kind of, I think, as opposed to the EGB processes that we've been talking about over the past few months that, that are really city initiated.
Start something new. I just was trying to figure out where we can go.
This process is really owner-initiated. So we would kind of call out as the city, I, um, we're open to accepting possible expansions. But whereas the EGB amendment that, that we've been talking about is the city evaluating where, we're more opening the door and then a property owner who wants to develop could come in and say, hey, I want to build a hundred houses. Here you go.
And one thing I would just add to this, under the conventional process, the state has prioritized their different tiers and these lands are not all, uh, weighted equally. I think the state prioritizes urban reserve lands or exception lands over the others. And through this one-time-only process, they've opened it up so that it's really any non, what they call non-resourced land, non-exclusive farm use, non-forestry land, uh, would be eligible. So it's behooves us, if you're interested in pursuing this, to pass the net widely. And there may be others, you know, folks out there who have studied these properties more, uh, intensively than any of us have.
And as we've gone through kind of the past work on EGB, we have had property owners reach out to us and kind of ask about who, who are adjacent. Uh, I'm not sure if it's sitting here, if they are within qualifying land. But there, there has been some inquiry over the past year of property owners who are interested in coming into, um, who we, who we then have to see if they qualify under the criteria.
And just a question, um, I, I have read through this bill once and I really didn't understand all of it, sorry. Um, if we were to open that sort of cat, sort of call for applicants, does the city have the right to then choose between those people who approach us or ones that make the best strategic or tactical benefit for the city?
Okay, well, yes. The short answer is yes. And what we've seen with, uh, the city at Ben is going through this process now. And they've, uh, in addition to the minimum requirements the state establishes, they've identified policy objectives that are important to that city. I can't remember what all of those objectives are. But if Newburgh, you know, through council direction or goals were to say, you know, we're really interested in seeing homes that are serving, serving workforce housing needs. And so proximity to major employers might be something that we're, you know, we're looking to emphasize. That, that's something that you could do. You could really establish whatever the goals are that you'd want to see in this. And then you wouldn't be locked in. You, you know, you could shoot, you could decide that really we haven't received anything that meets our, our needs here. And then you wouldn't be locked in, you you know, you could shoot, you could decide that really we haven't received anything that meets our our needs here.
So this was I what is exactly what I was alluding to the last time that we brought this up is. Most of these properties in the green are not eligible, only the ones that are on the city limit border, so.
You're looking at. Properties from here to here. The the only the property on the borders can apply. If that person chooses to do it, then anybody adjacent to that property can add their parcel to that as well.
The city, the five parcels that are marked in blue that are inside the urban. Urban. Not growth boundary, urban growth reserve. Boundary are destined by us in the past as actually going going to be in a city at some point. So it seems to me that the. The big piece in the blue would be the most desirable from the city's perspective, that's the I'm sure that's the Austin property. I don't know how they whether or not they would do that, but this would give them the opportunity. To have this product property brought into the urban growth boundary by us, by the state. And then they would have to apply to be annexed into the city before they could could develop. So really what we need to do is contact those five property owners in the blue. And then a few around the perimeter of the city, very small parcels. And the downside, by the way, on any parcel, but especially a small one, thirty percent of the houses they build have to be. Rent restricted or or what am I want to say, workforce housing for sixty years. So that's a tough. That's a tough thing for in today's land prices to obligate your property low income for that long, so. I took the liberty of writing a motion. That would go like this, I move to send the letters to all property owners inside the urban reserve. Or exception land adjacent to the city. To determine interest in the urban growth expansion before any effort is expended to by staff on this matter. And I did chat with Scott. And I, that is acceptable, Scott?
Yeah, oh, certainly, thank you for asking.
So that's the motion I would make. Which I just formally made.
I'll second it to discuss.
So we have a motion, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it looked like staff when you were giving your presentation that they had some things that they wanted to say.
Well, I. Not necessarily, I so I think the way that we would go about. Just sending these letters is that we would in fairness to all of the property owners who would. Who may believe that they're eligible and would have a viable proposal, Mr. Mayor, we would. I would suggest that we we make direct contact with those who are abutting. Or adjacent to the urban growth boundary as as you had suggested in your motion. And then it'll be up to them to reach out to other adjoining properties and to try to assemble something larger than that. Now, having said that, we do have these urban reserve areas that were intentionally designated. And we're presumably sort of next in line for coming into the urban growth boundary, so my question back to you would be if we were to. Sort of. Go about notifying property owners in that way, would it be acceptable to just by default notify all of the property owners within the urban reserves? But then for those that are not in an urban reserve, just those that are abutting.
So we have a motion on the table, I'll read it again. Move to send letters to all property owners inside the urban reserve or exception land adjacent to the city limit. To determine interest in the urban growth boundary expansion before any effort is expended by staff on this matter. Is there any more discussion? Mike?
Is that?
I might have missed a little bit, is that taking into account what Scott was just saying? Touch base with the blue, the blue areas there, okay, all right, then we're good. All right, if there's no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Thank you.
Really good present.
Yes. So our next item on the agenda. Is the Oak Knoll booster pump station. I was told there'd be no presentation, but apparently I was wrong.
There'll be some blah blah, but no presentation per se. I asked Russ if he could join me in case I get over my head on engineering stuff, you know. And, okay, so the item that is before you, Honorable Mayor and Council, is to determine to clarify. Should we continue with the Oak Knoll booster pump project? I am seeking clarification on the decision to continue to pursue the booster pump station. As approved previously by several committees of the city. The city manager, of course, is not a qualified engineer. And as a result, I did provide counsel with the latest engineering study which was in the packet. And to be frank, a lot of the things in the study are a little bit over my head. Staff does not have a recommended course of action, however. If on balance, the council decides to cancel the project, a motion could be made to the effect. I move that we cancel the Oak Knoll booster pump C I P project. Which, of course, is in this year's C I P project list, so we're not talking. Just for clarity, we're not talking about next year's C I P, which we're working on building, we're talking at one that's in the list right now. And if canceled, staff will additionally need direction on the disposal of the pumps. And possible reimbursement of community groups who paid for the pump originally. Any reimbursement will, of course, have to come from the general fund. Although actually, in a change to what's written here, I did check with Katie today and also the water fund would be acceptable. If we can prove for sure that the project was an identified water fund project in the beginning. Many years ago, in twenty eighteen, the city of Newburgh came into the possession of a two booster pumped. Assembly that had been paid for by local residents. That these pumps that are currently in hand were paid for jointly by Veritas School, North Valley Friends Church. And local developer Bill Rourke for the purpose of up of this upgrade at a cost of sixty eight thousand dollars. The city had previously agreed to upgrade with these pumps. If not used, the city would need to reimburse them for the cost of the pumps for the following amounts as provided by one of our committee members. And so we believe that these dollar amounts are accurate, twenty eight thousand dollars, Bill Rourke, North Valley Friends Church, sixteen thousand. And Veritas twenty three thousand, I'm just rounding down. No members of the administration team that worked for the city at that time are still on staff. And the current administration team finds this entire arrangement somewhat strange. This is not how you would normally go about upgrading a pump by getting community members to pay for the pump. Instead, it would be designed as a piece of infrastructure that whoever was doing the development. That triggered the need would pay for, and then there would be some adjustment with this system development charges typically. So this was, this is an unusual thing. After sitting idling for many years, it was proposed first by engineering. That the pump should be deployed to the site to increase water pressure for the subdivision that serves the church, the school and many private homes. Recently, the mayor suggested that this project may be a waste of public funds. In this case, from the water fund. It was suggested that the project should be canceled to save money. The C M cannot cancel this project without the approval of council, since the project was approved. By rate review budget committee and city council previously, so that's beyond my my authority to do that without your opinion to do so. Staff, therefore, desires to know the will of council on the matter. I prepared some bullet points of pros and cons of canceling the project. The city would save at this time three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that could be used for other water projects. Such as the H B two thousand and one water line. The current infrastructure of the pump is working in a satisfactory way and meeting the needs of the residents in the area. If other housing units were added, that builder. Could and should bear the burden for the costs of a new pump to supply units, for example, at a higher elevation. The city would save money by waiting for the current pump to fail rather than spending money now. This would result in a more modern pump later, since the pump in hand is already fairly old. A failure of the current pump would not be catastrophic, as it would simply reduce the flow until a replacement could be installed. Veritas was required by the city to provide the pump to supply water for their school. It was later discovered that the pump wasn't necessary for that purpose. Water pressure in Newburgh is provided inexpensively by gravity below approximately the two hundred foot level. The Oak Knoll pump supplies water to a few homes on and around Oak Knoll Drive. The school, church and subject residences would not be affected by installing the new pump. And lastly, it may not be cost effective to replace a working pump panel and generator. Here are the counterpoints, these are disadvantages of ending the project. The city already has the pump in hand and it was purchased by local residents for the use. The original pump station in two thousand was designed at two hundred and fifty gallons per minute to support forty single family homes. Using actual meter readings in twenty twenty two, peak demand was measured at three hundred and fifteen gallons per minute. The Veritas School added seven gallons per minute. And the plumbing fixture calculation for the existing church campus would result in a load of approximately forty one gallons per minute. The proposed peace trail village consisting of eight units would add a load of approximately seventeen gallons per minute. Currently, the maximum load equals about four hundred gallons per minute. The emergency backup generator is undersized and not capable of supplying emergency power. To operate both domestic flow pumps and the one fire pump in Oak Knoll Booster Station in the event of an emergency. If it required more than one thousand gallons per minute. It is only capable of running the fire service pump and one of the two water service pumps, not all three pumps at once. And you can see why I needed Russ here to help me because this is very complicated. The current motors, a variable frequency drive and electrical service panel were constructed in two thousand. And are twenty four years old and nearing the end of serviceable life. And funds would need to be paid back to the parties involved. Fiscal impact, if the project is canceled, the city right now would save three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But would likely lose sixty eight thousand four hundred and twenty eight dollars in exchange by paying back the residents who bought it. The funds could reduce the cost of other capital projects, for example, H B two thousand and one. The city would, however, need to build a new pump one day at an unknown date when the pump fails, if not replaced now. And I'm not clear exactly how this relates directly to council goals. Because I can see pros and cons on the money on either side, for example. So that is my request for clarification. And if there are questions, I will do my best to answer them, and if they get over my head. I'll get help from the man who laid most of our pipes in our city.
So this pump, we don't need to use it, we've got enough pressure the way it is now. If we, so if we give this money back, but can we sell this pump, it's a brand new pump, sounds like. Could we? Just use the money from the sale instead of pulling money out of our pocket, could we get enough out of the pump to reimburse everybody?
The pump was purchased in twenty eighteen timeframe, so it's a newer pump, it's not a new pump. And it is of uncertain market value, we're we're really not sure if we could realize anything for it. We certainly would not realize what we bought it for in the first place, obviously depreciation. So some money maybe, don't know how much.
So in your. Sorry, in your list of disadvantages. It says that the current pump is nearing the end of its serviceable life. So I'm guessing you have that's on a schedule to be replaced at some point, or are you just waiting for it to fail?
Just give you a little more statistics on the the pump station, there's actually two pumps that are on there, we call them lead and lag. One provides the service, should it fail or should additional service be required, the lag pump comes on to provide the additional the additional water. They have both been in service since the pump was started up and actually nineteen ninety nine, two thousand. So they're, the motors on one of the pumps have been replaced, we have that capability. But should one fail, we only have one backup pump, we don't have any redundancy. To provide that and a pump is can only provide up to to two hundred and fifty gallons per minute by itself. So we don't have anything planned on it at this point. Because at the juncture, we were previously looking at rebuilding, building a new booster pump station. And so when that was canceled, then we had not put this in the plan into place for replacement of a pump. At that time, because we had these pumps in reserve that we were looking at use.
So, so we approve this and we save essentially two hundred eighty two thousand dollars around there. If this pump fails. Within the next month and we've reimbursed the people and maybe we've now what we have is this two hundred eighty two thousand, how much does it cost to repair? Uh, one pump?
Uh, it's probably about fifteen to twenty thousand, depending on if it's an electric motor, if it's the impeller, uh, volute. There's several components involved in a in a water pump. If we should have complete failure of a pump, we could be spending anywhere in the neighborhood of thirty to forty thousand dollars. For replacement of a in in kind pump, exactly what we have. Depending on availability, and as everybody's aware, availability on that might be a little bit out there with the supply and demand. On that, because they are very specific to the design of the pump station itself. That there's not a direct retrofit. These pumps were bought as a as a retrofit, but would still require replumbing of the internal mechanisms in the pump station.
I think I think it would be fair to say also it depends on which bits fail.
Exactly.
Of the components, it was the panel, it might be more the generator or the pump.
So what's the worst case scenario, I guess, is my question then, how much is that going to cost? Like, are we truly looking at a savings if we have a problem?
I couldn't, I really couldn't tell you, worst case scenario is the entire pump station goes down. We lose, you know, if we lose power, we have an emergency generator that can provide some power. Uh, if we somehow lose the the electrical services and can't run the generator all the time. If the pump mechanisms themselves fail, we do have a valve that we can open as bypass, providing minimal. Uh, water pressure to the homes up there, however, it won't reach some of the the higher level. That's up there and would be under the state mandated twenty P S I that's required. That would be the the worst case scenario is something takes out the entire pump station and we have to rent bypass pumping capabilities which. Who knows how much that would cost, it it might exceed the cost of of the retrofit. That's worst case, we have very good mechanics. They're taking care of the stuff that's up that we have right now and keep it operating.
All right, council, you guys have all got your mics keyed.
Yeah, that's because I have a comment.
We we have a person here who wants to make public comment, one of the three parties involved in the transaction. So if you if you don't mind, let's let them step up and and make their comment and then we'll resume. And this is Jen Solly.
Good evening, um, this will be just shortened to the point, um, we'll covered a little bit of what I was gonna. Good evening. Um, this will be just short and to the point. Um, Will covered a little bit of what I was going to say. But um, I am here tonight as a parent at Veritas and also a Newburgh taxpayer to share my thoughts on the proposed cancellation of the Oak Knoll Water Pump Project. I appreciate the current city manager, mayor, and council's efforts to find use for this pump by considering it for an upgrade to the Oak Knoll pump station. However, given that this upgrade would primarily benefit Veritas, North Valley Friends Church, and a housing development by Bill Rourke. Um, I believe it would not be a prudent use of taxpayer dollars to put towards this project. So, in my view, the plan for the Oak Knoll pump station should be cancelled. And either the pump given back to Veritas to deal with, or you guys take care of it and reimburse the parties involved. Thank you. That's.
Jen, I have a question. Will mentioned the division of the cost of the pump. Do you agree with what he said?
No. Um, we'd have to go back in our paperwork. It was supposed to be split into thirds. Veritas purchased the pump and then the two parties reimbursed the school. And I know, I don't know the specifics. We have it somewhere in our paperwork and we can get that to you. But it was, there was some, it, it wasn't necessarily split evenly for different reasons. But I know that we do have record of exactly what the disbursement would be. Yeah.
And of course, the remark in the packet was anecdotal. So we were going to have to dig into that ancient history and figure out exactly what the numbers were.
Yeah, and I did bring Corey Abra. He's our facilities manager from the school and, you know, he'd be able to help with that too.
All right, back to questions. Alicia had your hand up.
Yeah, I'm just first off curious how this, this conversation discussion came about, if it was during conversation around reducing expenses or how, and you may have said that when I went to the bathroom, but how this conversation went about to then bring it forward to council since it is such an old, I'm racking my brain from this is when I first joined council. So I also would just want to confirm that the other customers that purchased the pump, have we spoken to them, their thoughts on it?
The reason why the item was introduced into the packet for this evening was because as part of the usual packet review that the mayor and the city manager do together, we go through the line items before they're brought forth to council. And he had asked me to add this one to the packet because of the opinion that it was a way for us to save money with all these other pressing projects. To take the second part of your question, no, no other conversations have taken part with other parties yet. There hasn't been a conversation with, with Veritas or with Rourke or with the church. This is simply to find out what the will of council is on this matter, because the CIP upgrade is a council-approved piece of work at this time and has passed through all the other steps.
Follow on. I just, I feel pretty strongly that because of how much discussion that happened with this specific item and how much those entities came forward at the time. And I understand that there may be a different leadership in Veritas at this time than we spoke with at that time. But I remember very clearly councillor Johnson working on this project. And it was a big deal to get across the finish line. So I just don't, I, I, I would feel more comfortable if we had a discussion with all the parties involved. And if everyone is comfortable with it, then I would absolutely love to have the cost savings of the two hundred and eighty thousand dollars or whatever it is.
I'd like to address a little bit of that. There was a time when we were talking about Peace Trail Village and, and Veritas School. I'm sorry, and the North Valley Friends Church. And when that got settled, this item was still out there. And I believe that the reason that we put this item back on the capital improvements list was just to be done with it. Just to be finished with that issue. My opinions have nothing to do with, with that part of this. When I saw that we're looking at three hundred thousand dollars to install a pump that was worth, that would, that would cost less than seventy thousand dollars, I said, boy, that doesn't sound right. Especially knowing that, you know, as Russ stated, everything on those pumps that exist can be, can be used. Now, by the way, I know that you guys read the AKS information. But first of all, who paid for the AKS study, this recent one that was done? Did we pay for that or did the, uh, did the church pay for it?
The city did not pay for the study. I believe that Bill Rourke paid for that as part of a development.
I'm referring to the, what's on our packet, this, uh, uh, brand new study dated.
Uh, according, according to the, the front cover sheet, the client was North Valley Friends Church.
Okay, all right. Do we know, is North Valley Friends Church interested in completing the project at hand? The, the Peace Trail Village? We, we know that they're not proceeding this year.
I do not know the answer to that question.
So, the other thing that's not clear in this is that none of the church properties are currently hooked up to the water system. So the numbers that are in this study as existing aren't. They haven't been hooked up yet. The church, neither the church nor the Peace Trail Village, obviously. According to the study, the two pumps are not made to run simultaneously. They're a redundant system. One pump runs and if something happens to it, then the other pump runs. I just, so according to this report, the, the situation as it currently exists is, is okay. It only becomes questionable if the church decides to hook up their stuff. And that's back to where the, the reason that we originally bought these, had them purchased was because the only, well, actually it was because Veritas School was required to purchase them before they were allowed to turn the water on, which they had, they had already hooked up to. But then they waited, you trucked in water for over a year while they had the, the original AKS study done to see what was needed, that this pump was purchased. I don't understand why one pump was purchased if it's a redundant system and it should have two of the same pumps. Would we not need another three hundred and fifty, what, four hundred and twenty-five gallon pump?
They purchased two pumps.
So, yeah, go ahead.
So, again, like I, I, I just think out of matter of principle of an agenda item on a, on our, on our agenda, it's important that we speak to the people that are our customers that are utilizing our services. And this has been a project in the making for over, for almost a decade. So I, I, I won't be voting yes tonight, but I am happy to vote yes if we pursue a conversation with the impacted parties.
I, I think I agree with that, that we should have a conversation with the church and and in fact, make sure that they are not going to proceed with their project. They haven't purchased a permit at this point, correct?
I don't believe so. Yeah, some, some architecture work has been done. We know that. And I do not know exactly what their next step would be. And in my, my correspondence with them last week, I haven't heard a response back yet. Might I suggest that if we're going to have a community meeting around this issue, we might attempt the impossible and get all the parties in one room together at the same time? What do you think of that?
I mean, I would love that. But I, my, my question is Jen, are you representing Veritas in a, in a formal capacity tonight? Okay, so we also need to, I'm not just talking about North Valley. We need to also talk, your, okay. So, great. But yes, I would want to make sure that Corey is okay with it.
I'm just trying to inject some levity into the proceedings. That was all.
So I suspect Rourke is not, is not interested in proceeding because he got the ability to get his subdivision going with the current existing conditions. This pump will have no effect on his project whatsoever. So, but I do think that you're correct, that we should talk to the church. See what Peace, Peace Trail Village is going to, uh, going to continue. Because this is the process that we gave them in their approval letter. Yes.
And I agree with all that. And I would also like to know, is this a true savings or is this a deferral for a problem down, down the line?
I could give a partial answer to that. I know that if the Austins decide to develop the rest of that property, they will have to build the West Bell Pump Station as part of their project. And of course, part of that will be reimbursable by STC fees. But until we start building at a higher elevation, the only customer that is, that, that has any need at all for this is that church.
In reply, our normal way of maintenance, we're responsible for the maintenance and operation of the existing pump station. We would have to ensure that its operation continues in its current state.
Will, is that enough or do you need a motion from us at this point to go ahead and talk to the church and see what their objective is?
So, I'm going to play on my inner Gandhi for a minute. I think that I have enough to know that we're going to wait on this till later. I would suggest respectfully, however, that I reach out to all three parties involved. And I ask each party to bring a couple of delegates together to a meeting to discuss this. Because I believe in the dream that Denise always had, which is a dream that Newburgh can be a place with respect and peace and love. And so I think I'd be honoring her memory by trying to set up such a meeting and we can see what comes of it.
By the way, it was not lost on me in this report that AKS said we need four hundred and sixty-three gallon pumps, but the four hundred and twenty-five gallon pumps will, will suffice. By the way, there was a, when Rourke did his study, he was supposed to make improvements. He was supposed to add a thirty horsepower motor, Gould's close coupled end suction pump. Were these upgrades done?
That's what the two pumps we have on hand are. That they bought.
Well, help us out then. If, if they weren't installed and workers getting water right now, are we, are we deficient?
We have the ability to supply the water demand as per the development, proposed development in existing homes that are on site. That was a, a three-way agreement with the thirty, thirty horse pump motors. That included both Veritas and North Valley Friends.
So why weren't they installed before Rourke, Rourke got the ability to hook up to the water system?
They were not installed at that time. It was, again, it was a three-way agreement that was put on there. I cannot explain why predecessor did not cause it to be installed.
We were, we were, we were not in the positions of leadership to make those decisions at that time. And in, in my chair, there was an ever-changing capo K D F people. So I, I don't know who would have been, I don't know.
So do you need anything else from council on this matter?
No, thank you, sir.
Thank you. So I have another item. I'm sure some or all of you have seen the sign on the J T Smith property. He decided, J T Smith decided to go public and there it is, with this article. And there was one part of this article that I feel is inaccurate enough that I have to address it. So here we go. J T Smith filed a federal lawsuit against the city prior to the current council's term. This filing prevented the city from negotiating a solution to this issue. The lawsuit was terminated by the court in its original filing. This happened earlier this year. J T Smith decided not to approach the city to negotiate, but instead chose to refile the federal lawsuit. The city had no part in the filing of either lawsuit. About one month ago, I was contacted by J T Smith. After discussing it with the city manager and the city attorney, I, like, I went ahead and called. And they wanted to know if we were interested in negotiating. I expressed to them that I personally would like to negotiate. And I believe the council and the city staff would be interested in negotiating this issue. But most likely, they would need to drop the lawsuit first so that we can discuss this directly with them and not through the lawyer. We talked about finding arbitration possibly being a, a solution. They said that they would consider it and let us know. In their published article, they stated that I was in favor of negotiating, but the city staff and the council was opposed. Since the city council had no knowledge of this discussion, J T Smith would have had to have direct discussions with each and every councillor to know how you stood on this issue. I regret that J T Smith jumped to this conclusion and I moved to direct, and I, I want to make a motion. I move to direct staff to indicate to J T Smith that the city is willing to enter negotiations with J T Smith after they dropped the federal lawsuit. Is there a second?
Second?
Okay. Discussion.
Mike. I'm not so sure if I want to, uh, drop this because I think we've got a good case. I mean, a judge turned it down first, you know? Okay, all right. Excuse me.
Well, it's, it's, I, I think a couple of, a couple of points here. One is, we are of the position, yeah. The city would welcome J T Smith dropping its lawsuit. The, the lawsuit was filed by J T Smith against the city. So the city is in a position as a defendant in this lawsuit. And we're obviously vigorously defending the city's position on that. So J T Smith dropping the lawsuit would be, would be welcome from the city. In the, in the meantime, we do recommend and advise council not to discuss the, the contents, the specifics of the claim for a variety of reasons. And so, as long as that lawsuit is outstanding, my office's scope looks a lot different than if there was not a lawsuit pending between, between the parties. And I, and I, and I appreciate that that's, that's, that's a little bit vague for council at this time, intentionally so. But I think that the, the, the main takeaway is that as far as the mayor's motion, you know, we would welcome the dropping of that lawsuit. We could have further discussions after dropping that lawsuit. But in the meantime, we certainly don't want to discuss the, the details of that, of that lawsuit in public.
Advise me as I dance around here, okay? Well, okay, I gotta come back to.
Councillor McBride, I'm, 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 I'm available to discuss items with you directly under the attorney-client privilege.
So my whole point for doing this was the fact that they said in that, in the, in the published letter that I was in favor of working with them and you guys were not. That is just not the case. And I wanted to make sure. Yeah, so I wanted to make sure as a matter of public record that everybody knows that you guys had not entered a, a decision on that matter. So that, that's the whole point here. Is there any more discussion? So that, that's the whole point here. Is there any more discussion?
Are you trying to put out like a sta- like, is, are you trying to put out a formal statement like on the graphic and social medias and all that?
Uh, within the limits I can do safely, as recommended by James, I do intend to counterpunch on this one. Uh, this claim isn't, is not going to stand, uh, uh, that they're putting on the street. We have to respond. And I think the mayor's motion captures the will of council well, if that is your will.
So are we going to send them some formal letter of, I mean, this is basically it that we're going to send to them? Or are we going to draft something else that says, you're out and out lying, you know? Cease and desist or whatever.
So I'm going to seek some help from James to make sure that, that my language isn't too Scottish and salty. And the plan would be for a social media release and also for a sign to go up near their sign. That can be. Right, but it would be, it would take to a, it would take you to a page with some very carefully curated words.
So for, for those in the public, the city manager's reference to a sign word was a, was a joke. Um, just want to make sure that that's, that's clear. But, but it's certainly a statement.
I was joking about putting it on.
My honorable colleague has recommended that we shall talk more about a s- a sign that should go up.
Alright, is there any further, uh, discussion? Seeing none, all in, uh, we have a motion to direct staff to indicate to JT Smith that the city is willing to enter negotiation with JT Smith after they dropped the federal lawsuit. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Thank you. So one more item, um, since Rebecca is here. Uh, we in our earlier discussions, Rebecca Wallace asked me to sign to, uh, basically give the decision to the O G E C, the Oregon Government Ethics Commission, which we did over a month ago. We were supposed to have had the answer back last week. Uh, unfortunately, the judge, the, who is responsible for giving us the answer, has requested another thirty days extension. So we should have the meeting back, or have the, uh, determination from O G E C as to whether or not Rebecca Wallace should be allowed into executive sessions in the future. Um, in, in due time. YAMCO News, thank you. So that should, uh, yes, Mike.
Why are, why are we waiting? I mean, if she's allowed to be in the, the, uh, county commissioners meetings, the school board and CPRD, I don't see why we should be keeping her out. I mean, I don't know what the reason would be. And, you know, it's like anybody that is in an executive session, if they say something that, that's part of the press. If they say something that they're not supposed to be saying, well, then they'll face some consequences on down the road. So I don't know why we just don't allow, why are we going through waiting for some judge? Let's just make the decision.
But I think, that's a fair question, uh, Counselor McBride. And, um, I do want to say that the, um, request and the submission from, from Ms. Wallace is being taken very seriously. And I am in support of, um, obtaining an opinion or an advisory opinion from O G E C. The reason for that, um, is manifold, but there are a couple of reasons. One, a couple of primary reasons, I would say. One is because the O G E C is the body that's in place to enforce remedies in the event that, uh, there is an improper, um, exclusion or violation in the determination of whether someone's a news media representative. So I think it's best to hear from the, the body that has the ability to assert or impose a penalty. I think it's, um, a good due diligence item to hear an opinion from, from them. Uh, you know, the, the second piece here is that is a news media representative is an item that's being actively worked through, uh, from a legislative standpoint. It's not very clear. Um, there's some gray in the statute. Uh, the O G C just released some, some rules around the executive sessions, uh, that took effect actually on October first, that are also creating a lot of gray space. And so, um, I do think that it's, uh, to council's advantage to have the benefit of their opinion or their input um, prior to making a decision, um, not just in this case, but also in uh, subsequent cases or requests that could come before council as far as determining who is a news media representative. Although there isn't a, um, uh, there isn't anything expressed in the statute stating that one decision in one instance sets precedent for future instances. In practice, it does, particularly if it's challenged. And so, um, and so that's why the, you know, there's a desire there, at least from my office, to, to get that O G E C, uh, opinion.
There have been several conversations between the two of us, the city manager and other lawyers in your firm on this matter that the rest of the council is not privy to. Would you say that it's safe to say that we are absolutely following the legal advice of your firm to this point? And that's, that's what got us here and that's where we're going.
Yeah, that's, that's correct as far as the, um, advice on going out and getting the O G C opinion. That's also, um, um, Ms. Wallace commented on, uh, being to have a, a process or procedure in place. That's another item that's, that's in the pipeline that we want to bring to council for requests that come in the future, uh, like this, having a, uh, process. That's not something that Newburgh has necessarily set in, in stone, um. Uh, at least not to my knowledge in the past. So to, to have that as far as procedures looking forward, I, I think is a, uh, a good practice and something we are looking to assist with standing up.
One just comment. I, I just really want to ensure that, um, Ms. Wallace is not being used as kind of the example. As we're going through this, I would prefer actually that we err on the side of protecting, protecting the news media on this. And, um, I also want clarified in our communications amongst us that it's not a blog and that it is, um, a true news source. So, um, do we think that this will be within the next month? And then also, I, I, the comment that, um, Ms. Wallace brought up that just made me think, um, is she stated that, um, it is the council's, it is a vote of a council, not one person, the mayor or the city manager, as to if someone can be, um, admitted into executive session. Can you weigh in on that specifically? Because I do think that that's, we need to be careful of that.
Yeah, so, um, let me, let me talk about those questions in, in reverse, right? So there, um, as far as council's decision-making authority, I, I want to point out two things. One is that council has the ability to, um, invite to an executive session any individual they want, whether they're a news media, a news media representative or not, right? So if there is a, um, a consultant, uh, for example, when you have, uh, me as legal counsel, uh, at an executive session, that's council electing to, to have that, um, that person or those persons in, in executive session. Uh, it's different when we're talking about representatives of the news media because it creates some, um, some statutory rights in terms of access to those, um, to those meetings of council. And, uh, council can, uh, opine on who is a news media representative. Um, it becomes a challenge when that position differ, differs from what, you know, maybe a state level authority is saying. Um, uh, but it doesn't necessarily have to be exactly the same in all, in all instances. You know, as far as your, your second question about, you know, blogs, that's a, there's, there's actually quite a fair amount of, of guidance from the DOJ on, on blogs. And I want to make sure we're talking about the same thing from a, from a definition standpoint, where we're talking about blogs. I mean, the, the, the Attorney General is already opined that a news media representative doesn't just have to be in print form. If you have a, um, news media source that is electronic, purely electronic in nature. Um, and if by blog, we mean someone who produces news solely electronically, that is not, the, the nature of it being electronic is not grounds to exclude someone. But then we do go, kind of the next layer or level of that is, okay, what is the content of the electronic? Um, postings or electronic, um, uh, stories that are being, that are being published or provided, if you will. And that content-driven analysis is where the, the, um, the Attorney General, um, has had a bit more scrutiny and, and it hasn't been as, um, as clear of an analysis, I would say, um, as we would like.
Just to follow on, so if, if you did, so you just said that we could by invitation as a council, invite an individual into an executive session. That would not be precedent-setting, as you stated beforehand in practice. When, if we were to invite in an online platform that had not been approved yet, that would set the precedent to allow that person, I'm assuming to, or that news entity to be, to be admitted to future executive sessions going forward. But could we invite Ms. Wallace or her, a representative from her news source to join executive council sessions going forward and tell, as Rebecca Wallace, not as managing editor of YAMCO News, so that we don't set precedent, but then still allow her rights as a managing editor to participate in executive session?
So the short answer is in the letter of the law, yes. You could, you could, you could write out that distinction. You know, to be frank, if, if, um, in kind of future correspondence, if there's a determination made that someone isn't a news media representative, but you've admitted them before, not as a news media representative, but as an individual, could that be used in some sort of challenge? I don't know. Perhaps. It hasn't been, we haven't really kind of fleshed that out. That hasn't been a, a fact pattern that I've had to deal with directly. But that's, that's a possibility. But there is a distinction there, yeah. Where you could admit an individual in their individual capacity, not as a news media representative.
Now, one of the things that we learned from your colleague, Tim, right?
Craig, Craig.
With Craig was that this decision is final. Once we allow somebody in, we cannot later tell them they can't come, even if they violate the rules. They will be allowed to come in forever. So that is why, that's one of the reasons why we felt that it was to our best interest to come up with a policy and a procedure to determine whether some, not, somebody has the credentials in today's market. So before we have a, 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 another executive session, that determination will be made by this body as to whether or not Rebecca Wallace is, will be allowed as, uh, managing editor of Yanhill County News, will be allowed to attend that session. Uh, hopefully before that happens, we will have the opinion from the O G E C so that we have something to sink our teeth into. So if there's no more questions, oh.
Just a just a, just a quick comment on the, on the timing piece too, you know, we there's a three-day period for advisory opinions. We expected that opinion within thirty days. O G E C, um, does have by statute an ability for a one-time thirty-day extension and they exercised that. Later than I would have liked, but they exercised it. And so it's one of those things where there is no second thirty-day um, extension by statute, we do expect within that.
I just have concern that we actually have more risk by not allowing Ms. Wallace into our executive sessions. Given that the community legal opinion through being admitted to B O C, CPRD, school board, has been set. And I understand that we have, Will, get your poker face. We, it's been set in the sense of, she's been allowed in. They've, they've, they've given their legal opinion. So I just regardless, we have risk because if we take the opposite opinion, she's already cleared with the other three boards that effectively are under the same statutes that we operate.
I would, I would counter by saying that we're not evaluating this particular application. We're setting a policy to evaluate all future applications. Well, okay, alright.
I, I will say as far as the, um, you know, the, the, the risk analysis, I think that's part of the reason why, um, it's a critical and very valuable data point to hear from O G E C because they are the enforcement body. Yeah, so they're going to have, um, frankly, more, um, weight than, than any of the no, it's not popular to say that, but the, the, the state agency here is going to have more weight than any of the, of the local bodies, um, and, and what's decided there. So when do we expect to hear from them? They exercised that thirty-day extension. Uh, Counselor Carmen, I don't have the exact date right in front of me, but it was that, it was earlier this month. Um, I would expect to, they're already at least halfway through that extension. So I'd expect to hear from them, um, early November.
Mike, you had something you wanted to talk about?
Sure. So I have met with, uh, some veterans. I went and, uh, enjoyed coffee with them a couple of weeks ago at their Tuesday morning meeting. And so I'm going to have a, a town hall, when, this Wednesday at Fernwood Grange Hall at six o'clock. And I, I understood that you were a veteran. I didn't know that. Thank you for your service. I appreciate that. And Derek, I didn't realize that either. So I'm just, I know it's kind of getting together kind of the last minute, but if you guys, either one of you guys can make it this Wednesday at Fernwood at six o'clock, we're just going to meet with the veterans, see what can the, uh, the Newburgh do to help them? Uh, is there anything that, uh, they, they would like, uh, that's on their heart, on their minds for us to take a look at and just to let them know that, you know, we care and, uh, appreciate them. And so I thought if you two wanted to show up, if you could, that'd be great. And probably only going to last maybe an hour or something like that. It's not going to be very long. And then that'd be it.
I have one more, I have an item too. Sorry. Um, I was speaking, this is for Will. I was speaking with, um, Beth Witowski from Regional Solutions and she's brought up that she had spoken to you, um, about the revolving loan fund for safe drinking water as a potential. And I was excited about that and just thought maybe we could have it on an upcoming agenda, not right now, but.
So the, the revolving water loan fund is one of the standard available funding mechanisms that can be used whenever we're doing those type of projects. And last time we looked at this, and of course, uh, whenever we start a project, we bench all the different possibilities. Last time Katie leaned towards the WIFI, a federal loan package rather than the revolving loan. But that's because at the time, the rates were uncertain and the WIFI alone allowed a one-time reset of the rates, if the rate- reset of the rates if the rates moved in a positive direction. I don't know if that's true anymore for the revolving water fund. It may have changed. But yes, we're very interested in looking at that. Thank you.
A while ago, I told you about going to Special Olympics of Oregon. I don't know if you guys saw the email, if you received an email from them, but they will be in Newburgh on Sunday, November tenth at nine thirty at the Aquatic Center. They are super grateful when we show up to these events. And I ask you to attend if you can and show your support for these athletes. It's at nine thirty. I unfortunately currently cannot attend because of election planning in the city of Portland. So if someone else could go, that would be fantastic. Nine thirty in the morning.
Alright, everybody. Thank you for a good meeting. Sorry it went over two hours. This meeting is adjourned.